Tom Hagman.
Here.
Sue Currie.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom. Five of the six presenters.
Thank you, please join me with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and we have one addition to our agenda, and that's under number four, letter F, which is new. Beyond that, the agenda is what was presented in Board Book earlier.
I so moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Director Kern, second by Director Nelson, for approval of agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up will be district recognition. Chief Lieutenant.
I want to start tonight by thanking the Board of Education for the outstanding work that you do all the time, and especially the last couple of years, the amount of hours that you're putting in and just phenomenal work and teamwork that's going on within our district for academics, for our facilities, and so on. And so, February seventeenth through the twenty-first of two thousand twenty is National School Board Week, and we want to say thank you. Thank you to all of you for the work you do. There's just a little plant there that you can put, and you can think about the district. Just a small little thank you to say thank you for the wonderful work and for being there for us and making great decisions on behalf of our children. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to take this time to congratulate the Brainerd Warrior Dance Team. The Brainerd finished first in both Jazz and High Kick at the Section Champions, in both for the second year in a row. They're headed down to the state tournament this week. On Friday, they will have Jazz starting at two o'clock, and on Saturday, they will be dancing their High Kick routine at the Target Center. And I was fortunate to go to the send-off on Friday night, and oh my goodness, are they good? So, they should do really well, so we'll be anxious to hear how they do. Letter C, congratulations to Nordic skier Noel Robertson, who qualified for his first state tournament with a ninth-place finish at sections. The state tournament for him is February thirteenth at Giants Ridge in Beaubik, Minnesota. Letter D, congratulations to the girls Nordic ski team for finishing as section runner-up and qualifying for the state tournament. The state tournament, as I said earlier, is February thirteenth at Giants Ridge. Congratulations to the Warrior Alpine skiers, Maddie Calaberg, Emma Hebert, Erin Holzel, Lauren Kellenberg, Cal Madison, Brandon Nevert, Max Darko, for qualifying for the Minnesota State Tournament, which is February twelfth, two thousand twenty, at Giants Ridge. And finally, congratulations to the Warrior Cheer Team for playing fourth, placing fourth place in the small non-tumble finals at the Universal Cheerleading Association High School National Championship this past week. So, boy, our kids are doing great again. So, congratulations to everyone.
Fantastic, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, up next will be our public input, opportunity from anyone in the public that wants to speak to the board. Come on up. See you none. We'll move right into our presentations. Student council update, Caitlin Shaw and Gabe Qualley. Welcome.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Oh, you can grab another chair.
I want this one.
That one looks kind of short, but...
So, we don't have much this week, or not a lot that's been going on, but one thing we do have is the Winter Wonder Week, which is going on this week. Today was College Day and Jersey Day. Tomorrow is Hippie and Disco, Wednesday is Construction, Thursday is Denim Out, and Friday is...
Formal Friday. Yep. And then, we're also, in March, we're doing an outreach program where we go and we package food for kids in need. Yeah, there's not that much that we're really doing right now.
Do you get good participation with that?
With the outreach program?
Yes.
This is our first year doing that, so we're going to try it out.
So, you'll see. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
We're also changing the location for prom, which is going to be at the...
Yeah, the grand march is going to be at the NP this year instead of at high school, and then with parking and stuff, it just makes it easier, so.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Great, wonderful. Any questions from anyone?
I just had a question that, you know, normally, at this time of year, we get students coming in from
Oh, from government.
Government and stuff, and getting their class, you know, okayed by coming to some meetings and stuff, so we haven't seen them this year.
No, well, AP Government just started.
Oh, just started?
Yeah, and she hasn't even brought up the fact that we get extra credit yet, so I'm sure she'll bring it up soon, so.
Okay, all right, so we will see.
Can you bank this meeting or anything?
Um, I'm not sure.
Who is the teacher for AP Government?
Ms. Bastian.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending.
Next up will be Special Education Child Count update. Jennifer Johnson and Nancy Anderson are here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, yeah. Okay. I've been here a couple other times here doing similar presentation, so we were asked to kind of come back and give an update as far as child count in special education. As you know, December first is kind of that important date for us in the world of special education. That's the date in which all students receiving special education services, students who have qualified in one of the areas for special education and are receiving services on December first get counted, and that is done by the state. And so, it usually takes them a little bit of time, and usually sometime mid-January, we get the report on what our child count is, and so that's why we're here for February, to kind of give you an update of where we are at. Before we do that, I just kind of thought we'd talk about kind of our six, our largest disability categories in which we serve the largest number of students, but there's actually thirteen disability categories in which a student can qualify for special education, and so I just thought I'd kind of point that out. Some of them are kind of what we refer to as low incidence. We don't have very many students, or that there are very low numbers of students impacted by those disabilities. Those would be things like blind, visually impaired, deaf-blind, deaf-heart-of-hearing, physically impaired, severely, multiply impaired, and traumatic brain injury. Those are kind of our low incidence, so we don't, we have very low numbers of students receiving services in those areas, so we don't we don't really focus on those. But I felt it was important to kind of realize that there's actually thirteen different disability categories.
Nancy, out of curiosity, for autism, how many, how many students do we have with autism?
That's coming up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So, this next slide just kind of shows, these are right currently now in Brainerd. This is our overall child count. So, on December first of two thousand nineteen, there were one thousand five hundred ninety-eight students, or twenty-two percent of our student population, currently are receiving special education services. You can see in the state of Minnesota on December first, the, that they're at about sixteen percent statewide. So, we are above the state average. We continue to be above the state average, as we have been for several years. And you can go back, the good news is at least from eighteen to nineteen, we didn't, we have an increase. We kind of stayed right at twenty-two percent, so we haven't, where you can see the previous years, we were kind of increasing up every year, so.
And even further back, weren't we down more, like sixteen percent for a while?
Yep, yep.
Because that's kind of what I remember hearing a lot.
Yep, yep. I would say going back to, when I first did the presentation, I think, I went back, the five years were two thousand twelve to sixteen, and I'll kind of show a comparison, but we were down around that, sixteen or sixteen point somethings.
Still above the state average.
Yes, yep. So, here's where we kind of talk about those six of the disabilities that we have the highest numbers of students receiving services. So, again, comparing, going back five years, two fifteen to two thousand nineteen, you can see in speech, language, we've actually decreased, which is kind of unusual. That's, we, but we've gone down two percent over the five years. Learning, students with a learning disability, we've increased twenty-nine percent. Emotional behavioral disorder, you can see we've gone up thirty-six percent. Other health disabled, ten percent. Autism, thirty-three percent, we've increased over the last five years. And if you remember, when I came and did the presentation from two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, we had actually increased one hundred and twenty-one percent. So, we've actually kind of stabilized a little bit. We're still increasing, but not nearly as quickly as we were. And then developmental delay, again, this is a category for, this is early, more early childhood. Students can only be, receive services under developmental delay from birth until age six. And so, and we've seen quite an increase there, forty-three percent. So, our early childhood numbers are really growing.
Is that because we're better identifying those students earlier on?
Oh, it's a combination of things. Developmental delay is, early childhood's focus is much more about early intervention, so it's easier to actually to qualify in that area, because we, the whole premise is we want to get in, provide intervention, hopefully, students, then we can maybe avoid having services later on. So, that's one area. And then, we, I think we're also, we are getting the word out. Referral sources used to be teachers were probably the most common, or parent, you know, parents now, doctors are a huge referral source for us. So, that message is getting out to the medical community to refer students, so there's a referral line set up that they can call and make those referrals, or email to make those referrals. So, I think it's kind of a combination of things.
Yeah, because that's quite a concern if it was just, if it wasn't because we were better identifying them. It would be a really large concern, so. And are there any, can they be in more than one of these, or are these each unique individuals in each of these groups?
There, no, they would be, so this is, we look at by primary disability.
Okay.
So, this is each, yep, unique individuals. So, looking at those same categories, this just gives you...
One of the things we talked about at our meeting at the Co-op last Friday is, with that forty-three percent jump in developmental delay, you know, we do hope that the services for the young children, that we're going to be able to have it so that they don't qualify for special education. But that is a significant number, and so as we're looking at planning in the future, we see a trend that our numbers probably, most likely, will go up. What percent, we don't know, but just keep that in mind as we're talking about this over the next few years, because it'll be interesting to watch that number. So, I apologize for that, but thank you.
Yep. And so, taking those same disabilities and just looking at the state's increase, so speech, language has at eleven percent, where we actually had gone down two percent in that area. Learning disability, sixteen percent, and if you kind of go back, compare, we're at twenty-nine. EBD, or emotional behavioral, is also sixteen percent, and we're at thirty-six. Other health, disabled, nine percent, and we're at, whoops, let me go back, ten. Yep, we're pretty similar there. I keep going back the wrong way, I apologize. Autism, we're up, the state's up twenty-two percent, we were thirty-three. So, and then developmental delay, there're twenty percent increase in the state, and we're, we were at that, that forty-three percent, so. Yep. So, again, I kind of, absolutely.
I'm sorry, one more time to the Brainerd numbers?
Yep, Brainerd, yep.
So, then autism is two thirty-seven.
Yep.
Can you send us a copy of these slides?
Yep, absolutely. And so, like I said, when I, first time I came in was two thousand sixteen and gave this presentation, you can, I just kind of go through, currently, back in two thousand six, between two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen, we had a nine percent increase in speech, language, where now we're, we've had a decrease of two percent. Specific learning disability, we actually went down eight percent, which I think was a little bit of an anomaly, because, and now we're up twenty-nine percent. Emotional behavioral disorder, we had an increase of twelve, and we're at thirty-six now. Other health disability, twenty-five percent. That was over those five years, and now at ten percent, so it's kind of stabilized there as well. ASD, again, this is the big one, where we had increased one hundred and twenty-one percent over that five years, and we're at thirty-three now. And developmental delay, we were increasing at twenty-nine percent, and now it's forty-three, so. We kind of talked a little bit about open enrollment amongst ourselves and wanted to look at that. And so, there are actually, at the end of January, there were four hundred and eleven students open enrolled into Brainerd. Eighty-nine of those students were students receiving special education services, and interesting enough, that's twenty-two percent. So, that's right on with what our state, what our child count is, so it really is about the same as our overall child count. I think some of us were feeling like it was higher, but it's, it's right there where, what our child count is. And I've kind of gone over this before, again, we just looked at, we look at our, what we call federal setting, and that's really about how much time are we pulling students away from their mainstream peers? And so, you can see, kids that are what they call a federal setting one, they're receiving less than twenty-one percent of their day, are they being pulled away from their peers. Setting two, our students that it's twenty-one, more than twenty-one percent, but less than sixty percent of the day. And setting three, students are more than sixty percent of the day are pulled away from their mainstream peers. And then we have setting four, which is like our Lincoln Education Center. That's a separate setting for students, and they have to be there more than half-time. We also have two Transition Plus programs that fall under that setting four as well. So, we look at how many students are, how are we serving our students across the district? So, you can see in setting one, we have seven hundred and fifty-seven students. Setting two, three hundred and thirty-nine. Setting three, one hundred and forty-six, and setting four is seventy-three. And we currently have three hundred and ninety students in early childhood being serviced, so that's kind of how they spread out across that. So, then when we look at those settings and how many students are being served, then that kind of leads us into looking at our staffing. And so, you can see in early childhood, birth to three, we have four special education teachers. We have six SLPs, but they actually serve, you'll see, birth to five. They go all the way, birth five, not just birth to three. But then we have seventeen special ed teachers in our three-to-five programming. Seven of those have what we call level three, or kind of self-contained for some of our kids that have more significant needs. And those are kids, and they're really being serviced with only other special ed students. They're not in what we call an integrated classroom, where it's some regular ed students and special ed, so. Elementary, you can see our staffing there, special ed teachers at Baxter, and across the board. Our SLPs, our speech, language pathologists, how many are in each building? And then we look at our level threes, which is our self-contained classrooms, again, where we have to have kids that are more than sixty percent of their day, they're receiving services in a special ed setting with just special education students. And we currently have one level-three classroom at Garfield, one at Harrison, one in Nisswa, and six at Riverside. And then middle and high school, Forest View, you can, you can see how many special ed teachers, SLPs. Important to note, like SLP, the high school, point-six SLP also services at Lincoln Education Center, as well as our Transition Plus programs, if they need, if they need a speech path. Total, we have one hundred and sixteen special education teachers in the district, seventeen-point-eight SLPs.
Does not include paraprofessionals?
Huh?
Does it include the paraprofessionals?
No, no. This is just teachers and...
So, we have almost eighteen speech and language pathol, because aren't, aren't we having a hard time finding those staff people?
Yes, they're...
So, would we want more than that, if we could get them, or is that, are you full, right, I mean?
We're, we're doing okay. I think the fact that we've decreased in students has helped us. If we were increasing at some of the rates we were, we would definitely, yes, need, probably need another one.
So, that's it. Any questions?
Would you mind going back to the, to the open enrollment?
Sure.
Slide?
Yep.
So, we have, we have, just so I understand, we have four hundred and eleven...
Total students open enrolled, yep.
Open enrolled, and that's, that's just this year?
Yes.
That's kindergarten, all with you?
Right, at the end of January is when Sue Anderson provided that information to me, and, and so then, yep. So, and of those four hundred and eleven, eighty-nine of those are students who receive special education services.
So, once an open-enrolled student, always an open-enrolled. So, if they start in, say, second grade, they're considered open-enrolled in second grade, and then if they stay until their junior year, they're still
Correct.
Because they're living.
Right, so in the state of Minnesota, residency is determined by where the parents reside. And so, if they live in a, outside the Brainerd district, but their parents choose to have their child enrolled in the Brainerd school district, they would always be considered open-enrolled until the parents actually, if they ever chose to move into the Brainerd district.
I guess what I'm wondering is, it's interesting for me, and I guess I would have, what little I do know, I guess, in terms of, of those open-enrolled students, which are, receive special education. I would also be curious as to how many families moved here as a result of special education, and not just open-enrolled.
Correct, meaning, meaning in other words, they came because they felt like there might be more programming options? Yeah, that does occur.
Are you able to grab that number?
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't want to quote a number, I guess, I'd...
No, no, I don't want you to tell me a number. I'm just wondering if we're able to access that number at a later point.
I don't, I don't know that we get that information. I know at times when I'm sitting in on meetings, that I, parents will share that information with me, but I...
Okay.
I don't necessarily know every one of the, right, every one of the children that, that have been open-enrolled, that receive special ed services, but I, that has been shared with me in, in meetings I have been involved in, that they came because they felt that there was more programming offerings in Brainerd.
And Nancy, again, the busing for those eighty-nine students from outside, we have to pay for that, or we go in?
It depends. If they have special education, or special transportation identified as a need in their IEP that they qualify for, then yes, when they open enroll, we become responsible to provide that transportation.
Even if it's all the way to Crosby, or...
Correct.
But it's supposed to be only put into an IEP if it's a result of their disability.
Correct, it needs to be, right.
Not all eighty-nine, right?
Correct.
The neighboring districts, then, has theirs gone up like ours has, or has it gone down, because they're coming here?
Their, their child counts, or open...
Their disabilities numbers.
Their child counts. Some are up, similar to where we are. Others are a little bit lower, or, you know, maybe closer, a little closer to the state average, but some of them are as high as we are as well.
I would say the trajectory we just looked at last Friday, everyone is going up except one neighboring school district. Yeah, everyone else has gone up.
And they're significantly lower.
Yeah.
Yeah, in size, yeah.
Yeah, the student total population, yeah.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions?
Good information, thank you.
Okay, yep, you're welcome.
And we'll be able to get that, like Ruth had asked?
Yep, yep, and Janet has it, so she'll be able to share it with you.
Be great.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Except we'll have an ICS building update.
Yeah. The Sourcewell grant is for, which is for level four.
For the level four, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is our update for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty. Bond improvements update. Tonight, we'll be talking about the Wave One project updates. We'll touch on the high school incident on two-four, two thousand twenty. Also, be reviewing Wave Two project updates, including reviewing Lowell and Riverside forbid approvals. So, we'll start off with the Brainerd High School. Scott, if you want to give us an update, please?
You bet. Real quick, project update, exterior framing is complete in Area Three and One. As you can see in the picture there, we did set our backup generator, and that's on the west side of Area One. Lower Area D demo is complete. That's going to be the new Paze and DCD labs. Exterior framing in Area Two, which is the wall leading right along Fifth Street. That started this week. You'll start seeing sheeting going around that. Area Two, final columns and pads are poured, and as of today, there have been, forms have been stripped, and they have been backfilled. Auditorium roof, joists, and decking is substantially complete, and we did pour slab-on-deck. Area Three, Level Two today, so things are progressing along quite quickly. As, most of you, I'm sure, are well aware, we did have a small fire on two-four, which was Tuesday of last week, and that was in an area of the building that was being deconstructed. It was a result of a power saw throwing sparks underneath a parapet wall, and the wood, which was on the backside of that, trapped the sparks, and eventually smoldered and ignited. The construction crew was able to get the fire out prior to the fire department arriving on scene. The school was evacuated as precaution, and I think from everyone's perspective, things went about as well as they could. Everyone was quick to get out of the building. They were quick to get on site. We did have a walkthrough with the state fire marshal and the local fire marshals on Friday of last week, and we're making a few changes to help speed things up in the future. And we've also made some process improvements to our internal hot work, internal to the construction site hot work process as well.
So, one of the, one of the videos that, that came across my, my desk, it's really surprising how quickly information is shared, by the way, especially with social media. But one of the videos I saw was, was of your workers throwing snow on the fire, which led me to wonder, do you have fire extinguishers on site?
There were, and what cut off was the two people who went up the roof, went up there with the fire extinguisher. That was at the base of the ladder, so.
Say that again?
Uh, the two workers at the end of the video who kind of come into the scene, they were coming into the scene with the fire extinguisher that was at the base of the ladder, on the floor beneath it. And that's a process that has been improved. There will be fire extinguishers. If they're working on multiple, multiple levels, they will be on every level.
And this will be for every building that does hot work, when they're doing hot work, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have, at the end of the day, do we have some kind of a walkthrough? Because if this would have happened at the end of the day, it could have been different. So, do we have something to make sure that everything's okay?
For, for the hot work permits, they have to seize all work thirty minutes prior to the end of the shift, and then there's one final walkthrough. That's part of closing out that, that hot work permit.
Okay, good, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions?
Can you go through on these exactly what we're looking at, especially for our audience members? I'm not even sure, it looks so different from...
Yeah, it's changing quite rapidly. The top-left picture would be looking east from the Area One, the west side Area One, so there's our new backup generator. There will be a fence that goes around that, and then you're seeing essentially the choir, band, and orchestra rooms there.
Okay, so this is like where the parking lot used to be?
That's correct.
Yep.
The top-right picture is the roof that is being completed very quickly by Thielens.
Okay, that's the roof, okay.
Yep, and then that's the precast auditorium towards the rear of the picture. And then the picture on the bottom is the lower-level Area D, which was just demolished last week, so we deconstructed those rooms. We've got the new joists, or correction, the new structural steel going in, and we're going to be starting to frame out at the end of this week.
And I just want to remind everyone that Scott has agreed before our next board meeting on the twenty-fourth of February, that at four forty-five, if you want to meet over there again, they'll give everybody with the hard hats and the vests and things, but again, please let Janet know, so we know exactly how many hard hats and vests to have available, and, you know, people are welcome to come as, as long as, as we have them. And so, anyway, it'll be really fun, because Ruth and I went through it the other day, and it's really changed, doesn't it?
Yeah, and it has since then even.
Absolutely. We're actually pouring concrete on the inside now, so there's a little less dirt to walk through.
So, anyway, we're really excited for two weeks from today to be able to see the buildings, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Scott, what was in that room then, and you kicked them out and threw them where?
That, that was, they're over in... That, that was, uh, they're over in South Campus right now, um, that was the, the, the existing, uh, special education. I forget the exact room titles, but they're going to be the new DCD and the Paze Labs.
I think one thing worth noting is that, um, you know, the, the contractors came together and met a pretty, pretty aggressive date for that milestone date for pouring those concrete decks.
Absolutely.
And, uh, everybody came together as a team to get that poured and, and, uh, poured out timely, so, um, great progress, we're picking up, we're picking up, uh, um, some speed on the project because of it, so, which is great.
Changes daily.
Okay, thanks Scott. New Baxter Elementary, um, we're painting on the second floor classroom wing, we're working on drywall finishes on the first floor classroom wing, uh, we're hanging drywall at the kindergarten wing, and then mechanical and electrical roughens are, are going on in the cafeteria wing, we're also working on ceramic tile, um, a lot of things are changing fast in that project as well, uh, projects on schedule, things are going very well out there, so. It's going to be a fun walkthrough here in a month, have everybody see.
It's going to look like a real school.
Absolutely. Nisswa Elementary, uh, similar process, we're painting, working on tile on the fir, on the second floor, um, we're working on drywall finishes on the first floor, and we're starting to paint the gymnasium addition. And again, that's starting to turn the corner really fast as well, um, we got to, uh, meet out on site last Thursday, and got to see some of the ceramic tile finishes, and see the colors coming together, so.
Lovely.
Yep.
Is it really that green?
That one, the one wing, so every wing is a different color, just that one wall, yeah.
Again, changing quickly, so.
Student friendly, yeah.
At our next tour there, it's going to be, everybody's going to be, it'll be a lot of, a lot of, uh, it'll be a lot of impressive work to see.
The windows in that building are, oh, to this world, beautiful, um, from second floor, they are just gorgeous, so, yeah.
Forestview Middle School, the Brainerd B sign still remains, um, it's scheduled for middle of this month, so we'll get that installed as soon as it arrives, close that project out. Harrison Elementary, working on lots of the different things, exterior metal panel is ongoing, interior steel, interior steel stud framing and roughens on the first floor and lower level are ongoing. We are sheet rocked on the upper level, and we're painting, um, getting ready to also start ceramic tile, uh, demo on, demo of the nurses area is ongoing. Mudding and ta, I guess I talked about that, mudding and taping on the second level and first level is ongoing, uh, they're working on the, on the main level, upper level's completed, um, yeah, exterior glazing is, has been installed throughout. Um, the project is on track for May first completion, so, uh, at least with the first phase, so things are, things are looking good there.
And on March twenty-third, leaving at two thirty from the south parking lot, we will take tours, this time we're going to go to Nisswa first, and then New Baxter, and then Harrison, and then we'll have the board meeting after that, so, anybody again that would like to go, please let Janet know, and she'll get everybody registered, so. We have the hats and the, all the carbon things that we need for safety and security, so.
Yep.
What's the date of that again?
Um, the twenty-third, uh, we won't be doing it March ninth, because that is the legendary Women of Brainerd Public Schools, and so, we're doing the last meeting in February and the last meeting in March, so, but things don't really be changed, waiting till the end of March.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Yep.
So on Harrison, is anything open to the present building, I mean, can you?
Um, no, not, not, not yet, we have temporary walls in place, uh, separating the, the existing school with the new addition.
Yep.
Uh, we also stolen some space to, to, to get a head start on some of the, uh, some of the demolition, so. Uh, Garfield Elementary, uh, contracts have been sent out, contractors, uh, to the contractors for execution, uh, submittals have begun, and then we're going to be getting a pre-construction meeting organized here in the next, upcoming next couple of weeks, uh, now that everybody's getting, getting, uh, their contracts, so getting excited, getting geared up for construction, so, um, things are going well. Lowell Elementary.
All right, the Lowell Elementary update, um, so right now we're out, out to bid for the mechanical redesign, uh, that is due this week Thursday, uh, here at two PM, so February thirteenth. Tonight we're recommending the remaining contracts be awarded for this project, uh, so everything except the mechanical scopes will work, and the next page will show kind of a breakdown of all those, uh, work scopes. Beyond that though, it'll, you know, uh, once we start, or once we award contracts, and if it's approved, then we'll, uh, start doing the, you know, procurement and submittals and contracts and insurance and all that kind of stuff, start marching towards construction early in June. Any questions? So, uh, here's, here's the breakdown of the work scopes, you can see that we've got earthwork, concrete, precast, the general contractor, acoustic ceiling and wall systems, flooring, roofing, glazing systems, food service equipment, electrical, fire suppression and athletic flooring that we're asking for approval, or, uh, requesting approval on, or recommending, I should say. Any questions about that, or want to get into any of those line items? Okay, so, it'll be all scopes except for mechanical, of course. Yeah, we'll see, we skipped there ten to twelve, so.
The dynamic flooring, what is that?
That's the athletic flooring for the gyms.
No, I understand that, but, um, is it?
It's the, the rubber flooring for.
Similar to Forshee?
Yeah, the same that we, very similar to what we have everywhere else. Okay, Riverside Elementary, um, this project we came in, uh, or all the bits came in on the twenty-third of January, so we're, uh, based on how the bits came in, we're recommending that the award, or that we award the contracts for all the scopes in this project. And also recommending that we include the acceptance of alternates one through six, and, you know, just to highlight those, one through four are interior space renovations. Alternate five is, uh, repair of some pavement out, uh, towards the back of the building, and then alternate six is the expansion of the gym from, um, a, I should say the, the medium-sized gym, as we've called it, so.
So it's the full width, but not the full length of a full-sized gymnasium, this is the one that years down the road, if the district would like to add on to it and make it a full gym, it would be doable.
Right, this sets up for the, the best, the easiest to expand in the future. All right, and then similar to Lowell, here's a breakdown of the scopes, um, you'll see that they're separated here, but, uh, the tops, work scopes one through fourteen minus work scope seven, which is roofing. Same titles, or similar titles as before, and then, uh, work scope seven is broken out separate, um, as a separate line item to be approved as well, uh, considering the, the contractor. Any questions on any of those up there, or want to talk through them? Okay.
We were just really excited when these bids came in, they came in really good, so, good luck.
So again, with flooring, yeah, authentic flooring, dynamic sports, that's the same as what's in Forshee?
It's very similar, it's not exactly the same, but it's very similar.
And then what is the process that will be, will we be acting on this tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Will be given.
Do you want to address that?
I've been addressed, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was talking to Reed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your question though, well, yeah, this, so this is a, an action item to approve later, the bits.
Right, so what we'll be voting on is, we'll be giving the thumbs up to the dynamic flooring?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Baxter Early Childhood is currently out to bid, bid opening is scheduled for tomorrow, um, so we're excited about that, we are last project, uh, last full project for getting bid results, so, um, they'll be at two o'clock here. Questions, before I talk about that, I want to talk about FFNE, we're going to have a couple furniture fairs, uh, this week as well, um, the first furniture fair will be at the high school tomorrow, uh, I believe the hours are nine to three. And then we have a furniture fair happening for elementary schools here at Wesby in room two hundred, uh, that'll take place with staff, district, district, uh, staff, and, uh, that is from one to four, I believe. So, so we're going to be able to look at, look at the furniture and see what they like, and see how it fits, and get some feedback.
Very good, any, any questions for, for Nick?
All right, thanks guys.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our actionable items, first up will be approval of our minutes from our last, uh, January twenty-seventh meeting.
I'll move those.
And I'll second.
Motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Campbell for approval of the minutes, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda is presented, and in your board, board packet.
I would so move to approve. The consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Director Kern, second by Director Blacklance for approval of the, uh, consent agenda, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Next up for action, we just talked about, is the approval of the, uh, to award the bids for the Riverside Elementary School project as presented.
I assume we'll prove our, the, uh, bid for Riverside?
Second.
Motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Nelson, any discussion?
So, is, I apologize, I'm coming, coming after these questions late in the game, but I'm just learning a little bit more about, about some, just some questions.
Sure.
And so by approving this, are we approving the, the flooring?
Correct.
So that's going to be the dynamic, the dynamic flooring?
Correct.
Somewhere? So.
That was the, the SPAC that went out for bid, and then that happens to be the company that's.
But then there's no, so there's no going back then at, at that point?
To a different contractor or a different flooring?
Different flooring.
You could separate and pull that line item from this action item and vote on that individually, if you wish to do that, and then if it didn't, um, pass by the board, um, a majority of the board, then we could go back and rebid that package.
Or, no, it's, it's not to say that you, we, you could potentially go back, and, and, you know, if we're looking for something different, um, which then would have to be, um, you know, look at a, as a change order, up or down.
Okay, so there'd be freedom to, yeah, because I don't want to hold up the whole, the whole process, but I do have some questions.
We'd have to move on that kind of right away, if we were going to do a change order of changing the material.
Right, and I just have some questions that, that I don't expect to be answered.
Sure.
Tonight.
Sure.
But just some things that I'd like to process.
Sure.
I guess.
Yep.
All right, I feel comfortable with that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And like, um, Director Hagman said, you know, you can ask for a change order as well, and at least get some pricing if you wish to do that, but.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, very good, any, any other discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries, next up is, uh, awarding the bid to Thiel and Heating and Roofing for the Riverside Elementary project as presented.
I would, uh, move to approve for Thiel and Heating and Roofing as presented in the package for Riverside.
Second.
Motion by Director Kern, second by Director Campbell, any discussion? And I will abstain from voting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, next item is approval of the, um, Lowell Elementary project as presented, with the exception of the work scope eleven, which is the mechanical piece, which we will hear, uh, those bits on Thursday.
I'll move approval of the Lowell bids for, for Lowell Elementary excluding work scope eleven.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Blacklance for approval of the Lowell Elementary project as presented, any discussion? In favor say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Last action item is approval of resolution support in Form B application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation as presented.
He's not here, but, um, I can address that, and that is that he does this each year, but it's some high-quality professional development for our coaches, and, uh, some of these, um, professional developments that are going to be occurring, uh, will be held at the University of Minnesota, um, at the Tucker Center, and so we're, and at the Tucker Center, and so we're, um, excited to allow them to have this opportunity for professional growth in state.
And so this is funding from the High School League to pay for that development, okay, I'll move the approval of that resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Blacklance, any further discussion? The resolution roll call.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagman?
Yes.
Sue Prun?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Charles Blacklance?
Yes.
All present, all in favor.
Okay, thank you, and of course, we always save the best for last, Corey Reynolds is going to talk to us perhaps about approving the blueprint one eighty-one, naming of existing Baxter Elementary and the new Baxter Early Childhood Center.
Good evening. Got all the screens in the right spot now. All right, I'm here to talk about, uh, a process to name the Early Childhood Center, um, what, the proposal you about, you're about to see, uh, follows Policy five sixty, the naming of school buildings and facilities. Um, it's a rather simple process really, we would just, uh, put out a call for submissions from the community, um, basically a Google form that asks people to give their idea and how they see their idea fitting the warrior spirit that we want, um, for all of our Brainerd Public Schools community. Then we would go, uh, the core design committee, the, the staff, and, um, with some parents, along with the superintendent, as called for in Policy five sixty, would narrow down those submissions, make sure, um, get it down to five-ish, um, that would fit the guidelines in the policy. And then we would release those to the public to narrow that down to three, that would then come before the, the board for final approval. Uh, you'll see here a list of places where we will communicate the steps and the process, and just, as it unfolds. And then a timeline, we would, um, pending your approval tonight, get it opened up this week through the end of the month. I think we'd take about a week probably to get a committee together to look through the submissions we got, narrow it down, and then, uh, another few weeks open to the community for voting, with a presentation to you all in late March.
Is there any cost?
No, what, staff time.
And this is similar to, um, to what we've done before, we're not setting any new precedent, I assume not, since it's part of the policy?
No, we, we would follow pretty much the same process we used, um, when we asked the community about naming Baxter Elementary.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I did think there are a few costs associated with some of these communication avenues, but they're pretty minor.
Nothing significant.
Corey, the one question, I, I guess I, I didn't remember on the new Baxter school that, that the, that the board made the final decision on the last three? Was that it? What you're presenting is that there would be three, three for the board to choose from?
Yes, that's what the policy calls for, no more than three.
Yeah, but do they, will they come to us ranked?
Uh, yes, I would give you the, the percentage of votes they got.
Okay.
The community votes.
Because I hate to get down to three, and then there's a two, two and two. You know, it'd be nice if the community tells us what the, what the name wants, and we basically endorse it.
Yeah, it, we, I would do something similar to what we did with Baxter, where I'd give you a list of demographics and how those, on how people voted, so you'd have some actual data, have an idea of who voted how.
Okay, perfect.
And again, too, I know with the Baxter Elementary, we said no, no people's names living or?
Well, so the Baxter Elementary process was a little different, because your direction to me was to ask them if they wanted to change the name or keep Baxter, so it was sort of a yes or no question, so. A little bit different in that this, we can't keep Baxter Early Childhood, we can't, we don't have a name for this facility, so we can't have a yes or no question.
So is that, is that policy lane, the no name?
We had that conversation at the board table.
I don't know if it's.
I don't think it's in policy, you talked about it.
Who said no names?
People.
Oh, people?
Yep, but could be communities or whatever.
The policy, uh, makes some comments on, on naming it on people, um, but.
And we're going to have the same decision to make regarding the Performing Arts Center coming up too, and so, um, you know, it's just something to think. And so, you know, it's just something to think about as far as a building. And is a building different than like a small space or something like that? And it's a conversation that we want to talk about. But let's see what, let's see what comes about.
Yeah. Very good.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Also...
So the Reed Charles name is off the board then? Reed Charles Center?
Maybe our initials. Work on our initials and see what they spell.
There you go.
That's not a name. Okay, I'll move approval of the survey for the naming of the new Baxter Early Childhood Center.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Kern for approval. Any further discussion? Not those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Next up is informational, Mr. Campbell, Brainerd Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the foundation met this afternoon at three. And again, most of the talk was going over the big event, of course, that was just held here on this first of February. And again, a great event, and went over really well. And again, thanks for the whole, board was there too. That was great to have the full presentation there of board members. They very much appreciated that. Their goal was to raise like sixty thousand dollars. And don't know for sure, but may clear approximately seventy-five thousand dollars.
Ooh, that's amazing.
So great work by, by all. Jenny Castle was leading the rush there this year, and she did a phenomenal job. Event went smoothly. I think it just flowed so nicely and everything this year, so kudos to them. Again, if you see any of them, again, to thank them, and, and thanks to the community too for the great money spent on there too, you know, and going to the auction items and bidding on those things, and we appreciate all that work there, so. They also talked about the scholarships. There's a hundred and fifty students have applied or started their applications for scholarships, so those will close like at March first, so, so those are being worked on. And they'll be getting, giving out applications and scholarships here in May. And that is set for May thirteenth, I think, at Forestview Middle School, is the senior recognition night. What else did they talk about? They're gonna be giving the, Prairie Bay's gonna do a Happy Hour for a Purpose will be April ninth, so that's where they donate money back for that. It probably makes like a thousand dollars on just that one night event, so. And they got, always working on some big events and things like that, so. Great group of people, and, and that was about it. That should cover my report.
Thank you. This is service report.
It'll be short tonight. Just wanted to give the board an update that we met with Ellers today. Greg Crowe came and ICS was involved as well to go through our bond issuances, what we've done to date, what we have outstanding. At MSBA, Lane had talked with them because interest rates are low. So we're gonna do some looking at our LTFM funding and see what, what we should be doing, if we should be issuing right now or if we should hold off. But that's the main, the main outstanding item. We do have some abatement bonds, but we're gonna review what projects we have with that. And then our capital facilities bonds, we are gonna continue to hold off on those just to see when we need to issue those, so.
Good, thank you.
Any questions?
That was a great meeting. We really are in good shape. It feels good when you have those meetings, yeah.
Two pretenses report.
Well, just about all my things are covered. We talked about that we have some bid opening tomorrow, Early Childhood Center bids. Hopefully at two o'clock, it's really good news again. And on Thursday, it'll just be work scope eleven for Lowell for the mechanical. And that's the revised plan that was, that we didn't approve tonight. Again, if we didn't approve the other ones by next Monday, we had, was it sixty days? Then we had to approve it, so we needed to approve those by Monday. So we're excited about that, to have that done. Let's see, School Bird Recognition Week, February seventeenth through twenty-first. So again, we thank you, and we'll celebrate that during that week. We also talked about the tours that are coming up. We talked about the furniture fairs, so there's a lot of things there going on. And the last thing that I'd like to talk about is, is, as you can tell by some of the conversations, we have been spending a significant amount of time lately working on the budget for next year. And there are some pretty major decisions that we would like some guidance from the Board of Education before we make our final decisions regarding, regarding that. And so we were hoping to just have a board retreat on an afternoon on March fifth at one o'clock. However, Bob Neistram got ahold of me, and he said that he would not be here. And so we're wondering if the board is available either at one o'clock on Tuesday the seventeenth or at eight AM to about one o'clock on Thursday the nineteenth, if either of those dates would work. Of March, yeah. We're gonna keep working on the budget, but it's the soonest we can get everybody together, so.
What were the dates again?
I'm sorry, Tuesday the seventeenth from one o'clock until we're done, or Thursday the nineteenth from eight in the morning until we're done. We're guessing it'll be about four to four and a half hours. And all of the items that we're gonna talk about, they impact what we do moving forward with the budget this year. So some big things, a lot of things going on in the background at the district level, and we're excited to talk about it with the full board.
March seventeenth and what was the other date?
The nineteenth, Thursday the nineteenth. Tuesday or Thursday.
Tuesday time was what?
Tuesday, one o'clock. And it would be all afternoon or Thursday the nineteenth at eight in the morning to about twelve or one. We'd have lunch and stuff for the board.
Seventeenth works for me, but the nineteenth I'll be on a state.
So you're gone, okay.
I'm fine with either.
I'm okay with either. Seventeen.
Either for me.
Okay, let's schedule it on the seventeenth of March at one o'clock until we're finished. Thank you, and that's all I have.
All right, great, thank you. And your agenda, there's a number of meetings that have already been, for the most part, discussed. Any other business to come before the board? Not?
I would move to adjourn.
Motion by Director Kern, second by Director Campbell to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.